Again, gonna be a senior, really happy that he's back for our powerlifting team and I know who it is too, so Johnny, well done.
Good job, you guys. Congratulations. Thank you for representing Perryton so well.
Did you find a girlfriend or something?
Yeah.
Go watch Johnny's post-lift interviews. Oh, I think they had a great time.
That would be cool.
Long flight, though.
Okay, let's move on to reports, starting with superintendent's report.
Okay, just a couple of things. We have nineteen hundred and five students in our district. That is about a hundred students less than this time last year, so we've gone from eighty to one hundred. I expect that's gonna stabilize and probably go back and forth a little bit, but that's where we sit at the moment. Couple of updates. One is our RFQ that we are working on for our bond. We have, I've been working with Scott Stark, who is our architect, our independent architect that we've hired, and Fred Stormer, our attorney. We're putting the final touches on the RFQ, combining some criteria that Scott has designed for us or has put together for us and should be releasing that fairly soon. Hopefully, in the next two weeks, we'll be releasing that and then starts the process for selecting our construction manager. That process will go, we'll take the initial applications, we'll narrow that down to a group of probably two to three, which those two to three, we will interview and select. So that should be started. That's probably gonna be about a seven, seven to eight week process. So just so that you all know, to give time to gather the interviews, or gather the applications, select, and then go through the interviews. But we're trying to get that done quickly so we can move forward on the progress into design, the design phase of our bond process. An additional news, I think Mr. Kemp will probably update you on air conditioning, but I do want to tell you a little bit about the, you know, we were worried about our air conditioning and using our Esser two money to pay for our air conditioners for the gym. But consulting with Region sixteen and Brittany and we all kind of gathered our heads together, and Esser two and Esser three money are very similar in what you can use them for. So, and we checked, Region sixteen checked to make sure things were allowable. And what we did was, we took some of the things that we were paying for with Esser three and went ahead and paid those things with Esser two so that we could release that money to Esser three to pay for the air conditioning. So we took ourselves out of the deadline of the air conditioner. So even though it is September twenty-fifth, and I don't think they're here yet, are they here yet, Alan? We're no longer under that September thirtieth deadline. So we did a little swap that was allowable. And so that's helped us out quite a bit and anxious to get those into the gym, especially after a hundred and six days and our kids practicing in there. So that's the Esser update. The last thing on my list to share with you guys, you requested a report on the things that we pay for with Tasby. There's the, some of the invoices from last year are in your book. There's also a little summary that I prepared that's based on some of those invoices. The summary is kind of the groups of services that we take part in with Tasby, plus a little, some bullet point explanation of what those services provide. I will, I'll say this, they, from, I reach to Tasby quite often for sample job description, sample contracts, or policy help for, Alan uses them for environmental. There's quite a few services on there that we use pretty regularly. And we're fairly, fairly, they give us a lot of good advice at those moments. So I'll let you read through those and if you have any questions, I can entertain questions.
What's the total we spent on Tasby?
For the services itself, somewhere between ten thousand, ten, eleven thousand dollars if you add all the services together. The policy service will pay a little more because we pay as they do updates, depending on the extension, how extensive the update is or how extensive the policy is and how many of them there are, will pay like per policy that they update and put in our book.
When are you guys going down?
What's that?
What are you going down to Tasby?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yep. The convention's Thursday, Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Local district update, it was like an amount and then another amount?
Which one's this one?
It looks like it's from page twelve, maybe just making sure all of.
Yeah.
Okay. To not forget that check.
Yes.
Cool. So actually, that's my next.
Really have handwritten notes.
That's okay. Good. I'm glad you're writing notes.
So Sarah, were you asking for feedback on what we wanted to say to Tasby?
We were gonna do that, yes. It's about fifty thousand dollars we spent with them. And if they're actually utilizing their stuff, their legislative efforts, I'm not real pumped about, considering they're like over fifty things on their agenda. So we just hear my comments on packet whenever y'all wanna do that. But board books specifically, I don't love. I don't know if y'all utilize it a lot on your side, but when I have to use it when I'm on, it is miserable. I don't know if that's a value, if it's something we have to have. I know it's fifteen hundred dollars, but only we don't, but that's still, I don't know if we're required to have that.
Not required, but if we don't have it, we don't have access to, we can't create and access things online. We'd have to do a lot of emailing, we'd have to prepare everything manually. Right.
Yeah, look, check minutes from twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Two clicks in your whatever meeting you wanna go.
Right.
Yeah, you'd have to change the whole system now, I think, if you're gonna do something like that.
And it's probably better on a computer than on a cellphone.
No guarantee.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
It worked, but I was like, is there something better? But if there's not.
It's not as user friendly as I would like it to be, especially in viewing PDFs.
Yeah.
But for fifteen hundred bucks, that's a pretty.
It saves us a lot of time.
Over the year. Again, if only the archiving, that's a pretty easy way to go back. It's that or we go through a stack and all, you have the same mountain of red bound notebooks that I do in the corner of my office.
But the online don't have a tab. Someday. We wanted to talk about the Tasby thing.
If you were done with your reports, that could be a report that we would have. We can't make any decisions or vote on anything or provide guidance, but thoughts that you had or things that you saw from what you're going to be discussing.
So post-meeting is when you wanna discuss this?
Post-meeting is when we can discuss what all they did. I mean, we all got the email that had what all the resolutions were gonna be and checked the ones that we thought were stupid. Talked to our representative on the ones that I thought were stupid, because there are some that I disagree with their direction on. There's a whole lot of push towards the bad definition of equity. And I saw that show up two or three times as I was reading through the documentation. There's a whole lot of eradicating, the phrase eradicating systemic racism in all of our society that Tasby is talking about.
My problem is those things open doors.
Exactly. Those types of things are not specific policies involved in education we need to be dealing with.
My favorite was one of the schools submitted a resolution telling, Tasby has gotten out of their lane and has gotten involved in politics and need to get back to their original intent.
Well, I think that's fair.
I agree with that resolution.
I was like, hey.
A while.
Yeah. But most of these things, if we wanna change them, it looks like we need to be more involved in it because most of it is coming from Austin, Benin, South Texas. If you look at the maps and look at the legislative committee and where everybody's from. But that is, not gonna happen tonight, but if that's something.
Well, I think from this organization or a similar organization, the policy advice ought to be neutral. And I don't see neutrality here. And so that's probably a concern. I'd like to see them stop and go back to their jobs.
Stay in their lane.
And the things that we do agree with them on, they're not making any progress anyway. If you look at what, towards the back, they have their report about like advocacy agenda status report, what their priorities were and then what their progress is on those items. And it's like, nope, 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 none, zero, this failed, failed. Actually, they tried to pass one, you know, opposite of what we all believed, things like that. It's like they're absolutely not, their legislative efforts maybe even misguided, but the ones we agree on, none of it's gone in there. So it was just interesting. I am interested to go and see.
Yeah, good.
I'll wait.
Yeah.
I'm not expecting like show up and change everything, even though, you know.
There are alternatives.
Well, thank you, Sarah. Campus reports across the right page here. We will start.
Good evening. And things are going so well at the week. And lots of changes. We'll have sixteen students by Wednesday, this week, the end of the six weeks. So they'll start rolling in and we've had thirty-six credits completed this six weeks. So things are going well. And I did note in my board report something that Betty Garcia is doing with our students in DAP. We've got thirteen students in there right now and most of those are for baby. And so she is implementing some things in the morning, less than every morning. And I'm really excited about the result and some of the things that the kids are saying about it. It's positive. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. All I have today, any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. Perryton High School.
We tour a cell beneath the teacher.
Is she? Okay. I saw that that was scheduled for this evening.
Yes, she said she was gonna start over there and then try to get here, but I'm gonna bet she got locked.
We went too fast.
Yes.
Maybe she'll get here in a minute.
Yeah, if she's here, we can ask some questions or if we have others, we've got her report here. We've got her QR code with additional information on there. If you have any other questions, just take them directly back to Tori, so.
I heard that me, the teacher, was staff requested, the teachers requested. I thought that was really nice.
That is cool. So we'll go to junior high.
Okay. These are really exciting at the junior high right now. I don't know if you've been to a volleyball game or been on campus recently, but it's just, there's just an air of pride and spirit and excitement that it's nice to see. We had a huge crowd at last week's volleyball games and there were, I mean, community members who were just coming to watch the girls play that weren't necessarily family or, you know, and that doesn't always happen with junior high sports or our junior high events. So it was very exciting to see. We have seventy-nine students meet their AR goal. I'm not gonna read all their names, but that was pretty great for the first six weeks because we always increase as we go. So that was exciting. Our three highest, our highest eight grader had fifty-five points already for the year. So that was awesome to hear. Rocking and rolling it, J H.
Thank you very much. Let's move across the street to Williams.
I am here for Reed this evening. Everything is great at Williams. They did attend Aviation Day out at the airport a few weeks ago and the kids had a great time and really got a lot of positive feedback from the students on that. So he wanted me to highlight that. Can I just gel mine if I just move on to Ryan? Okay. At Ryan, things are just great. We have begun parent-teacher conferences. The end of the six weeks has come. It's just amazing to see the growth that's already occurred. Second grade had an AR party at Ranger Field on Friday and I'm not sure who had more fun, if it was the band and the athletes that came out to play with those kids or the second graders. But those kids read like crazy to get to go to Ranger Field and experience that. So thank you to, you know, the high school and Randy Cunningham and Cole and just for getting all that together because it was so much fun. And we had great weather, so it was nice. Nick Kinder, beginning of the year testing his full swing just to get a base final, what those kids know and, you know, where we need to take them. And it is so neat to see those little ones just already just learning so much, you know, getting used to school and structure and things are going great at all three campuses. Don't have any questions?
I have a huge comment about the rainstorm day, that anybody helping get the little kids out of the cars, in the building, we're soaking wet. And that was me. I know we're not like online, but that, yeah, that was my first parent experience with a.
We're on.
Oh, we are, okay.
Yeah, I see the green light on the camera.
So thank you to everyone that gets our kids out of the car, rain, shine, whatever.
Harsh weather days are.
That's terrible.
Adventurous at Kinder and Ryan. We try to get those kids in and protect them from the weather and in turn the staff is soaking wet and usually bring an extra change of clothes and have a little time to warm up. But yes, it's important that those kids get into the building safely.
Jody, how many kids do you have in the STEM program?
In the STEM program at Ryan, all of our students are going through STEM during our specials. So that four hundred and twenty-four kids are receiving STEM each week. With Kami, yes. It's fantastic. The kids are, I mean, one of them built something the other day in another class and was like, look, I'm an engineer.
It's harder than that, but okay.
That vocabulary is being built, they, the confidence that they have in trying their ideas and adjusting them. So she does that every Friday, opposite of P E. So she has some great ideas and things are going well. Lots of things that Kinder and Ryan was still, so.
Super.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp.
Well, I must have had, like Ronald saying, still waiting on air conditioner. Ranger, last week, I had, we're sitting, we're missing somewhere in Mexico.
Having a great time. Yeah.
They said that the most important episode, about pretty warm for volleyball games. We didn't want to take the heaters off. Yeah, all the stuff's been dimmed, you know, everything is a little numb. You just get there.
Yep.
Said last time we completed on all the change out on the other. Still waiting on contact or junior high, control systems. Program on the computer side of things, all the stats, same thing. Right now, they're just all running on internal schedule, kind of, that's along the side. No matter, things going pretty decent.
Other questions? Thanks, sir. IT department, see Ivan? I hadn't seen him. So his report there, if you have other questions, can direct down Communications and Safety.
On safety, we started our Alice training. Everybody is in it. So cafeteria, teachers, administration, everything, administrative, about fifty percent that have either started or concluded so far. So, and then I just need to get two of you who I was on. I thought it was funny to have them question or to, I saw you two after.
Is she gonna say them out loud?
I'm trying to see who she's looking at.
I don't need your form, I have your form.
Is the camera off? And I see fall safety meeting on October nineteenth.
Yes.
Can board members be involved in the train derailment training? I see that's listed in here as well. The EOP had been submitted for the Texas School Safety, include train derailment.
You're doing what you've got.
Always, I'm just being silly. I always know that that's weird when I see that.
We're gonna have to do that one because don't use those tracks anymore. But we, I was gonna do it the day of the day and they said whoever owns the tar team and out, we put it back twenty-four hours and use it again. So we have to do a train derailment.
That would be incorrect.
Right. They said they could put them back in if they own land.
They still have their right.
No, because there's, there're buildings now on the right of way that they'd have to drive the train around.
That sounds even more.
I did reach out to one boy and I gave him feedback him about some of the questions on it. So if you have anybody else who need a contact to get that information, we still need to do it.
I do. I will, I will get you the name of the chairman of the, what's it called? The top of Texas Railroad.
Spearman.
Yeah. Trying to blank on his name, but I've got it at my office. Because they started, when they started to take the rail away, they formed a Transportation Rail District to try to save the rail and it didn't work, but they still hold the leases on all of this ground that's up and down from Shattuck all the way to Spearman. But I'll get you his name. He'd be a good one to get on that, so. Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped to the middle of that. I just wanna drive a train. I don't wanna go to training, I wanna drive a train. That's the difference.
There's a difference.
They're very up on that career change.
As I say, Ms. Hughley.
I really don't have anything to add. Really excited that our new parent professional has been bitten by the speech path fuzz. She also found out that her one special forces she had, Frank Phillips, in the nineties, will go out. So she's already.
Start here, go anywhere, right? It's good.
She's gonna finish her two years, Frank Phillips.
Perfect. Anything else? KD report, Coach.
Don't really have anything new on that.
That's not right. There is something new.
We took a lot of adversity during that first man, lost our quarterback on a really dirty cheap shot. Was not very happy about that. I couldn't really talk on Saturday and a little bit of Sunday when my school was going out. I wanna give a shout out to our junior high cross-country program. Coach Erickson is doing a fantastic job with those kids. They're going and meddling and placing and scoring really high in their meets they've gone to. She's been a shot in the arm for our junior high sports. She's done a fantastic job. So shout out to Coach Erickson for that. And like Ms. Wheeler said, our junior high volleyball teams are doing a really, really good job and the crowds that have been there have been great. We have three home games Thursday night. It's kind of a rare occurrence for our junior high and our JV volleyball teams to all play together. That's an opportunity to come out and watch our sub varsity's get after it. They play really hard. Our coaches are working really, really hard with those groups. So very pleased with how this semester's going. The numbers have been great. Our morning workouts have been really, really beneficial to what we're trying to do and the culture that we're trying to build. And we've had some people that have not met the standard that have been removed from the athletic program. And that's something that I think as long as we stay consistent with and as long as the kids are bought into, that our programs are gonna take off and be where we want them to be. Here, so really looking forward to seeing the dividends pay off from those. Any questions?
Mike, we can at home.
Hey, Cole, I will say it was nice to see those lights work.
Yes, sir.
So I got to see, yeah.
Even in a big loss.
I know, but it was exciting. I think we threw Canadian for a little bit of a loop when those went off.
We probably did. Funny comment that Coach Rude made after we scored. They're gonna try to score seventy on us now. I said, you just stop. And then we scored again and they didn't work the next time.
Yeah.
Kind of a buzzkill. They do work and they're, the lights are incredible every morning right now. The sun doesn't come out till about seven fifteen. So we've been taking advantage of them in the morning workouts. So very grateful for that.
Should we turn those off whenever they're throwing the ball?
Yeah.
It's like basic food.
Mid past.
I have a kid by it, actually. Very, very trusted. So they do a very good job. They volunteered to do it. They saw the people coming at me on Facebook for not having them work in week one and they were very gracious. It's such a, it's a weird deal because you have to be within so many meters of that box to operate it. So there's not very, I mean, unless you're in our student section, you can't. I mean, there's, you have to walk and move. And I was gonna have Daisy do it, but she sits up underneath one of the press boxes and she was having to run back and forth and that just didn't work. But one of the students volunteered and very grateful for the help.
There's a lot of those coming out on Facebook and pick up, upgrade games, enter.
Oh, absolutely. It is cool. I agree.
Very good. Thank you very much. Food service, Ms. Walker.
We've just been burning the phone lines, calling the parents, but have not had some of their application. Now they're paid. We've had several, we've heard just a couple of parents coming in and telling us.
Any questions?
Charlotte likes the school lunches.
Ranger Roundup. Hadn't seen Desiree, is she here? Okay, that's all right. Okay. So any questions? We know where to direct. Curriculum instruction, Miss A.
I have a pretty short report, as you can see, just to give you information. And I have attached the letter that T A has released a letter saying that they are going to postpone our ratings from, it's projected, what, September twenty-ninth or twenty-eighth for a few months? I believe Sarah predicted it last month. So I'm gonna get with her next time. I'm gonna try to predict or need to predict what T A is thinking because she's obviously figuring it out.
Blake was not as impressed. You've been dealing with U S B A, U T A. I was impressed. I was impressed. I was like, I was right. And he goes.
That's good news.
Once, one. Zero. Yeah. I'm glad they are adjusting it, but I'm anxious to see what that means. Especially if they think they were consistent in the middle of COVID in the middle of that, oh, well, we kept everything measured the same. So those are valid data points. Okay. Any questions?
My only question is for T A. I'm defining the words in their statement. They spend a lot of dollars writing that sentence. They spent a lot of dollars writing that sentence. And a long letter. If anyone, since we're now online, if any community members would like to read the letter from TEA, come find me. I'll let you, I'll, I'll show you the copy. It's three pages long.
Lots of gold in there too, like where you aren't.
CFO's report, Ms. Maras.
A lot more for this, that's what you're coming for.
Is that, is that big one? The real big one is double. Is that junior high? You know, probably. No, that doubled. The rest of them won.
Yeah.
There was one that was, I mean, it was like double the second place.
That's the junior.
I don't know when it's gonna hit, but we, we did negotiate that contract down. So hopefully we get some help there too.
Um, any questions on this question? And that five number lead to the next change in ten dollars. I'll go back to that again. But what's different is that is school on page ninety-nine, our local revenue. We exceeded it by a hundred and ten thousand. Our state revenue, we exceeded what I expected, it became by two hundred and thirty. That really has, it's obviously not our dependence, our special population. And then on federal revenue, it is our Shar's income. We have somebody in our office that works really hard on Shar's. And so she was able to get up to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand after. So really, our income was three hundred and seventy more than what I budgeted. What is Shar's? And for special education, I will literally endorse my. Like that's one of the asking in there. Okay, on page one hundred through one hundred and one, you know, this, the lines that run over. Do you have any questions on what it was on?
We didn't mix up with that low supplies and other operating costs under budget. I'm on all the way across that was.
So that's, that's important. Going over and through most of the funding that we gave. We ended up with six hundred and fifty-five thousand in income.
It takes everybody.
So that couple of revenue is where we get that from, or what we're gonna create from now on. Even mine is un-audited. So there maybe can be things that they'd like to see. We're a little under on where we ended with cafeteria by twenty-seven thousand. Even mine didn't go back to the, don't know because they had a ton balance last year.
Even then, what they do is cook, eat supplies and materials. Um, that her baby was big way. And now you gotta replace it.
So that lands us on page one fourteen and at this time we took a couple more, very small, little things, they ate a couple more. Since my permit is off, so we're looking at this over here. And Mr. Brown's already covered it.
Is that number on the page? Can I just look at my list?
No, but it will be on the next meeting. It's on what you see on page ninety. Ninety-eight up there on the southwest.
Okay. Okay. I'll steal the class.
Okay. Any questions, Britton? Everybody good? Get my spongs here. Board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda this evening is allowed by Texas government code chapter five five one dot oh seventy-four personnel matters, five five one dot oh seventy-one attorney constipation and five five one dot oh seventy-six security devices. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in a closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in an open meeting. It is now six thirty. I'll talk slowly. Eight.
Yep. You got it.